I'm going to call this a meeting of the Planning Commission that I guess is not quite a normal meeting of the Planning Commission order. Today's Monday, June 30th, is about four minutes after 6:00. I want to start the meeting by thanking the members of our public for coming because obviously this is our second go around and we've now made you come twice and I appreciate that very much and again apologize for what happened on the 14th, I think.
Excuse me, could you have been introduced themselves because I don't know who they are?
Sure, sure. Would you guys mind just stepping up and introducing yourselves if you think you'll be addressing the your address later?
Mike D'Errol, Brattleboro Police Department. Mike Focaccio, Brattleboro Fire. Patrick Orland, Amity Town Manager.
So, the ultimate body proving this is the Federal Emergency Management Authority, is that what it's called, FEMA?
Agency.
Agency, thank you. So, we're not actually here to vote, we are here really to review and to solicit input from the people that actually have to plan for disasters and then when disasters hit, deal with them. So unless you think I'm leaving anything out, Rod, I'm prepared to let you take over.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody, thanks for coming. You should have a for you a copy of the draft plan dated June 6, 2014, that was prepared by the Planning Department and a memo from me addressed to the Planning Commissioners dated June the 9th. So, just to sort of reiterate what James just said, the town maintains an all-hazard mitigation plan approved by the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security at the state level and then also the Federal Emergency Management Agency, otherwise known as FEMA. And we do it because, for a number of reasons, we do it because it's understood that the best way to minimize and avoid the impact of natural and human disasters is to, or avoiding them is the most cost-effective and least disruptive way of reducing the impact. So, the reason why we're here is to discuss ways in which we can reduce the threat of known hazards to the population and property owners of the town of Brattleboro. The benefit from having a approved hazard mitigation plan at the state level and at the federal level is that the state and federal government will reimburse the town for damages if it's a presidentially declared disaster at a far higher rate than if we don't have a hazard mitigation plan. So effectively, we could be reimbursed up to 92.5% if we have an approved hazard mitigation plan and the difference would be well over 25%. Okay, so it's a significant savings for us. It only pertains to a federally declared disaster, but it's all in our recent experience that we've had at least one of those. So, the other connection with the Planning Department in particular is that, and the Planning Commission, is that many of the things that the Planning Commission writes policy for pertains to land use and land use is a significant contributor to hazard avoidance or hazard exposure. So, in particular, in the process of writing the 2013 town plan, we looked at a number of land use measures from the standpoint of hazard mitigation and made clear policy statements that was subsequently approved in the plan by the Select Board to minimize the impact from hazard and those include concentrating development in already established and built-up areas of Brattleboro so that we would reduce the strain on emergency services and emergency services personnel. Avoid continued development in floodways and parts of the designated floodplain, again to reduce the risk exposure of emergency services personnel and to reduce the demands on emergency services. And also, perhaps most importantly, minimize the exposure of residents and property owners to repeated damages or loss. And then, further measures that we've reviewed recently under the rewrite of the subdivision regulations includes looking at steep slopes and other hazards as a trigger for changing land use regulations so that we, again, avoid dispersed settlement, added costs to emergency services and avoiding the added risk of residential development in particular in steep slope conditions. And a map demonstrating the total area of Brattleboro subjected to a steep slope designation is included in the town plan and it's significant. So, in particular, the two-thirds of Brattleboro's land area that lies west of the I-91 corridor are the dominant land use zones are rural residential and rural and both those districts, steep slopes are a major factor. So, there's some other smaller or more specific issues that our land use regulations and our review of development can also impact, which is the floodproofing of structures, ensuring that propane and fuel tanks are tied down in flood-prone areas, that we can flood-proof utilities or services to buildings wherever possible. But it also goes out to and includes issues such as identifying high-traffic incident locations and routes, ensuring adequate water supply, upgrading and identifying and upgrading undersized culverts and a range of other measures that would, small, that each of them are small but cumulatively would have a significant impact in reducing exposure to hazard. So, that's background to the work that we've been doing on the hazard mitigation plan. The actual plan itself, I'm just going to spend a little bit of time talking about how it's constructed. For reasons to do with obtaining approval at the state and federal level, we follow a template, so there's not as much freedom, if you like, to structure the plan the way we might like. What we do, just going through it very briefly, is describe the geography and demographic profile of the town. We describe development trends, which are well-known, and again, this is mostly drawn from the town plan, and then we compare it to the rest of Wyndham County and neighboring counties, both in New Hampshire and Massachusetts. Then we go through a process of risk assessment and so we have held departmental-level meetings in the town to review the kinds of risks that we encounter and assessing them for likelihood and severity. And then we also discuss the public participation process that we are undertaking as part of this plan. So, the work that we're doing tonight is really to review those steps that we've taken and to go over in a public forum how we arrived at assessing vulnerability. So, this is on page 13 of the plan and continues through page 15. And then, in particular, what we do is identify what in FEMA languages, FEMA languages refer to as repetitive loss properties. So, wherever we have, did you want me to copy the plan? Yeah, there you go. Persistent claims, insurance claims for the same properties, we can identify them as so-called repetitive loss properties. In fact, the data for Brattleboro, like much of Vermont, is actually a bit thin here. So, you can imagine in other parts of the country, repetitive loss is a much bigger factor and we have some claims data but not an extensive amount of data on that. So then, once we've established the kinds of hazards that we're likely to encounter and the likely impact to the community, we then look at mitigation goals that are obviously connected to that and you'll see, again, this is on page 18 through 19, much of it actually relates back to the town plan. So, there's, in broad terms, there's the work that we can do specifically with emergency services personnel and our response to specific events, including training, participation in mutual aid, participation in the local area emergency planning committee, mutual aid agreements, like I said, maintaining road standards that have been set by the state, undertaking more inventorying of bridges and culverts and ensuring that we're up to specification there. And then, the rest of the material, or the rest of the area that we can focus on is more relevant to the Planning Department and the Planning Commission and that includes, again, the rewriting of the subdivision regulations and the zoning code and ensuring that we enforce around those matters correctly. Some other matters that are included in here include guaranteeing the water supply for the town and ensuring that it's safe and maintains the appropriate standards and then also the wastewater treatment plant as well. So, onto the end of the plan, we lay out how the plan's going to be monitored and evaluated and how it's going to be updated in the future and then we simply make a series of entries around the number of meetings that we've held and other factors that are vital to the plan. So, that's a quick outline of the plan. I think at this point, it might be useful, if we've got any questions on the memo or the plan itself, we're happy to take them. Or, you know, you can just start discussion if you want.
I thought it was you. Go ahead.
Liz.
What is the, page 19?
Yep.
Phase 3 River Corridor Management Plan?
Oh, that's so nice of you to ask.
Well, basically, my question is, what things, I assume this is a revision to a previous one that's been prepared?
Right.
And the question is, what have we learned from Hurricane Irene and are addressing now in this plan?
Okay. So, the SGA stands for Stream Geomorphic Assessment and so the Agency of Natural Resources has organized itself into river corridor areas for its work and there's personnel in the Agency of Natural Resources that are responsible for coordination of activities and assessments across this watershed. So, it's the Lower Connecticut River, basically, and it takes in the entire area of Brattleboro and the two tributaries to the Connecticut River that are of interest to us and to them, the Crosby Brook, which drains the north end of town, roughly the Putney Road area, and the Whitestone Brook, which drains the western end of town from the Marlborough border all the way to the Connecticut and has a couple of other smaller streams feeding into it, including the Halliday Brook. So, there is a, A and R has adopted a plan for the entire river corridor, this part of the Connecticut River, including those tributaries and as part of that, there had been stream geomorphic assessments at a tighter scale done for the Crosby Brook and for the Whitestone Brook. Those both predate Tropical Storm Irene and there's a proposal at this stage with the Agency of Natural Resources to revisit the Whitestone Brook and do another stream geomorphic assessment to try and establish what changes in the profile and behavior of the Brook have taken place as a consequence of Irene. So, anecdotally, people have observed that the Whitestone behaves differently and I'm sure Mike can talk to that in terms of responses that we've had since Irene. So, it's an effort to understand that better. We, or it's still at pretty early stages there, like the study has not even been undertaken, but there's a preliminary interest in doing that. And so, the other thing that the Agency of Natural Resources is interested in, pursuing project-based responses to river corridor management such that natural forces playing out on the stream can be accommodated, but that has to be done in recognition of the settlement patterns that are already in existence. So, wherever there's opportunities to obtain more flood storage or similar projects, they want to pursue that, but they're also conscious that in communities like Brattleboro, there's a lot of development along the borders of the Brook and that that's a conflict. So, that's the answer to your question.
And so, when this study is done and there's different recommendations, this could be amended?
Yeah, my expectation would be that if we do participate in the new study, which I'm, the RFP has, for one phase of it, has just gone out and, you know, it's some months away from even being offered to a consultant. And the study would be undertaken and there would be findings from that study and then we would get to consider it. I think that it would be kind of menu-based, we could choose or look at a combination of projects and regulatory changes that would implement the findings from that new report. We have substantial data now, but the question is whether it's relevant, given Tropical Storm Irene's impact on the Whitestone.
Thank you.
I don't think there are any other questions from the board. I'm curious to hear what our town officials say.
Okay.
Don't be chomping at the bit, guys.
Is the microphone open? Should I be speaking to the microphone?
You can't hear yourself amplified, but it's necessary to be picked up for the PCTV.
Well, first, I'd like to say, I just want to thank Rod. I asked him to take the lead on this plan and on the redevelopment of the all-hazard plan for the town of Brattleboro, given its importance, particularly in our ability to recuperate in the wake of a natural disaster, made a heck of a lot of a difference for Tropical Storm Irene and knowing that there was an expectation that we need to have an updated standalone all-hazards plan submitted to FEMA by later this fall, it was important to get on this and the other planning department have done a fantastic job in terms of getting on. We, you know, at the staff level, I know, had a number of meetings where we endeavored to prioritize, or not prioritize, but to sort of categorize the likelihood and the impact and the level of vulnerability. I think the result is in here in its final form, is that correct, Liz? This is based upon the work that we did?
Yes.
You know, I think this is an outstanding piece of work. Just a couple of minor, you know, little details that I think I can probably address in an email, but I think it's a solid piece of work and I think it'll be useful for the town. I'd love to take any questions from you folks if there are any.
When you say minor details, are you talking about grammatical pattern?
Yeah, yes, that minor. I think, as Rod pointed out, there's a way in which FEMA is rather prescriptive as to the structure of the plan, what it shall include, what it shouldn't include. This meets that standard, or so I'm told, and so I think it's a good place to start. It's important for us to get this work product into FEMA on time and, you know, there are, I think, further developments that we'd like to include locally. Are we available to do those as plan amendments in the future?
Sure.
Okay, so it's a good place to start. It fulfills the requirements as stated by FEMA and allows us the opportunity to develop this program.
Actually, Patrick raises a good point. So, in case you were wondering, there's a couple of oddities here. So, we submit this plan, once the Select Board has approved this plan, we submit it to the State Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security and then they pass it on almost straight away, they check it for completeness and then they pass it on almost straight away to FEMA in Region 1, so that's the Boston office. Typically, if past work turnaround is any guide, it's going to sit there for well over a year, somewhere between 18 months and two years before we find out that in fact it conforms to their expectations.
Wow.
What happens if you're in the gap?
That's the whole point. If we make it, if we get this to emergency management in Montpelier or in fact Waterbury before October, then we qualify for participation in what the state calls ERAF, which is the Emergency Relief Action Fund. ERAF. So, and that's, that's, basically, the terms of that are, as long as we've got a submitted plan to FEMA, the state will pay up to, so the state and the federal government combined will pay up to 92.5% in a presidentially declared disaster. If we were not to submit it by October, then we wouldn't be considered for inclusion in ERAF. And then, if a disaster was to befall us in November and it was a presidentially declared disaster, we wouldn't get anything more than the bare minimum, which I believe is about 20%. So, it was, so there's a huge, from a municipal management standpoint, there's a huge imperative for us to get this in and to get it right, which is part of the reason why we're doing what we're doing. And so, for the community in general, there's a massive benefit from us attending to those details.
Is the...
The issue with FEMA taking so long to approve it is just by the by.
So, there's a pre-existing plan that covers this until October?
Yes. Well, actually, FEMA changed their minds about what their level of jurisdiction is that's most appropriate for Vermont. So, previously, we were part of a region-wide plan that was approved and then FEMA had a policy change and decided that they weren't going to recognize a regional plan in Vermont, that the jurisdiction that they would recognize would have to be municipalities. So, we had a perfectly adequate plan that was part of a bigger plan and that was supposed to be in good standing until 2016, but there's been a policy change.
Was that change after Irene or before Irene?
Post-Irene, after Irene.
Yeah. So, we're good now? I mean, it's hurricane season now, so it's not necessarily...
You're good-ish now, but we need to get going on this. So, it would be interesting, the state would recognize this, I don't know about FEMA. So, and so, we're making a good faith effort, which is key, and then if we submit it by October to the state and then they forward it on to FEMA, we should be okay. So, there's been a, mostly, there's been a policy shift at FEMA that's triggering us doing this now. Once it's in place, we're good five years, but that's sort of a little odd because of how long FEMA would take to actually do the approval work.
And of course, that's assuming FEMA doesn't change the regulations after that.
Right.
Which obviously they're prone to do.
There is the sort of aspect of always chasing something. No. Yeah.
That's life, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just the way it goes.
Okay, do either representatives from police or fire want to be heard or are you just here for the ride?
Good, James.
No, I mean, you don't have to speak if you're content with it. I just, we...
No, I just want to echo what Patrick said and the work that both Rod and Brian have done on this. One of the things that's really good about this is that Brattleboro truly is a town of 12,000 people, but the catastrophes, the incidents that we can have happen, we've got four, five major state highways that all come together down. Major railway that runs behind Main Street, waterways all over the place that are constantly flooding and right up to today, we continue to put a lot of work into a school crisis response plan for the town, which is addressed in this document, that we will go public with this following just before school opens and I just, it's very timely and I think it's a good document.
Can I ask you a couple of questions while you're up?
Sure.
I noticed that there was nothing about forest fires or wildfires and they mentioned that's not considered a high probability thing here, although I do notice that occasionally Mount Wantastiquet takes a little smoke.
Yeah.
Is that, are you content with that? I mean, you know more about fire.
Yeah, because of our vegetation types here and that we really don't have what they call it wildly and urban interface, that we don't have destructive possibilities, I guess, that they have in the Midwest and Out West, so I'm satisfied with what we've got here in this.
Yeah, I had a question about fire also. When that fire happened on Wantastiquet a number of years ago, I had lived in the West and so was, for a short time, and was aware of fire stuff, but also was aware of the inaccessibility to get to that fire and are there plans in place for how, I mean, we're very rural, Brattleboro, and there could be fire in someplace, say, we were to have a couple of years of drought and some fire got tripped off somewhere, again, like Wantastiquet, where it's not readily accessible. Is there a plan in place for those kinds of things or is that kind of, was that kind of winging it at the moment and really just depending on the resources of the people at that moment?
The good thing is that that piece remains on the other side of the river.
Yeah, I know.
Depending on the situations, a municipality can ask the governor to declare a state of emergency, which then gives us access to state and federal resources so we can get helicopters, we can get whatever we need to take care of any emergency. So, though it's not built into a plan, we know how to do it. They are accessible.
I realize that this was factored as a low probability, but it's there in the back of my mind when that fire happened, you know, that was a real wake-up call for me anyways.
And in the spring, probably about once an hour, everybody looks up at the mountain to see if there's a pot of smoke coming out there, but we do have accessibility to those resources.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not watching from my house.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking of other areas in town, like in West Brattleboro where there's a lot of, not areas that are not accessible by roads, per se, many more by trails and whatnot.
Right. Good things, we can get around all four sides of almost anywhere. We may not be able to easily get into the middle of it, but if we can surround it, we can contain it.
Thanks for answering one.
I've written several wildland fire management plans for the Vermont National Guard.
Oh, really?
And those fires are prompted by military gunfire, so we don't really have that problem here, hopefully.
I was just curious about Yankee, if that's something you feel is appropriate to anybody here? A terrorist event or, you know, a spill of water? I realize that it's not as significant as it ever was, but...
To be quite honest, and I've said this multiple times, there is always a possibility for an accident at Yankee or with anything, no matter how safe you try to make something. I'm more worried and we prepare more for the railway behind Main Street than we do for commercial Yankee.
Like hazardous materials that come to...
Yes, the stuff that goes up and down that railway and on the highway is, you know, much greater risk than an accident at Yankee. Though I'll say that we are well-prepared for Yankee just because the state and federal government makes us that way.
So, yeah, actually, if you look at page 14, a radiological incident, likelihood is regarded as possible and the impact would be critical, vulnerability is moderate and the vulnerable facilities and populations would include the entire town and all facilities. This might be a good moment to look at the impact being critical, for instance, rather than catastrophic. One of the things that's a little odd about this plan is if you turn back to page 13, the definition of catastrophic is that more than 50% of properties are damaged or there's a loss of essential facilities and services for more than 14 days and that there's multiple deaths and injuries possible. deaths and injuries possible. So recently, there were some tornado events. This lower Midwest were actually more than 50% of, they were small towns, but more than 50% of the buildings were actually damaged. So that would qualify as catastrophic. But it actually takes really a lot of effort here to get anywhere like that. So what was the figure for Irene? It was, it was tiny as a percentage of all structures in town and tiny in terms of the number of people that were actually directly impacted. So we didn't come anywhere near catastrophic, even, you know, with something as large and as destructive as Tropical Storm Irene, which is educational on a couple of different levels. It really stretched, I should say, it stretched my office and it stretched, I think it's fair to say, it stretched the town as an organization really seriously. And it certainly stretched the patience and the resolve of lots of residents. But it was nothing like catastrophic according to this definition. So it's something to reflect on a little bit, I think.
Interesting.
It was, I can't remember, but it was...
It was less than 1%.
It was less than 1%. Even in terms of the impact, like property damage, as a percentage of the total grant list, it was less than 1%. So...
Yeah, it's not like a tornado that comes in and wipes out half of a town or some town last week that demolished the whole town.
Totally wiped it, so.
On this list of stuff, what would a mass shooting incident fall under? Would there be mass casualty event?
Depending on the location, either mass casualty or a school safety. So that was the school safety plan that Mike discussed before. So town personnel have been working with the schools for some time now, working up a schools crisis plan. And that would address the possibility in the school setting.
Is that something that might be worth sharing with other places? I mean, unfortunately, our country has a history of these occurring in schools, but there are, you know, it could happen at an employer in town, it could happen at a public facility, a shopping mall. So I just didn't know if there was work being done to reach out to, like, other than just schools in terms of shooting events, which are seeming to be becoming more common.
I'm not, oh, maybe Mike or, can I answer the question? I don't believe that it's gone beyond the schools at this point, but that's a pretty big project right there.
We have worked very closely with the schools and we're told that we're far ahead of almost everybody in Vermont with this type of plan, which makes us feel very good. We've actually had a company in here going through our plan with us, they want to use it for a template. They've been hired by the school department of the state. We've reached out to, you know, even though they're an educational facility, SIT, we're working, you know, they're a much different type of campus in the high school or elementary schools. So that's taken a whole lot more work. We do do emergency planning with businesses and things like that. The plan is still in a draft stage until we can, and it'll always be a work in progress because so many things change in the country and we learn from every incident. But that'll certainly be a public document to anybody that wants to review it with us and use it as a template and use it for their businesses.
Does that include bank? I mean, like banks, those are kind of, kind of the stick-up kind of things, or convenience stores that get robbed?
They get robbed. You know, one of the things we plan for two, three times a year, something as simple as throwing the heifers brings thousands of people to this town that we have to deal with in the case of an emergency, simple as a runaway cow, as stupid as it sounds, could trample a lot of people to, one of the things that we addressed with the police department last year was right after the Boston bombings. So we addressed knapsacks or left just sitting unattended, what do we do with them? So it's a plan that will be, even though it's built around the schools, it'll be able to be adjusted and expanded for anything. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, that's perfect, thank you.
If I make my extra comment on some of those. Large employers in town, we will review their security plans, we won't write them for you, but we do review them and we give them our recommendations on what we think is best practices, like Chief Pocassi was saying. Unfortunately, every catastrophic event, we learn new and better ways of doing things. And it's unfortunate, but that seems to be the norm. So what we do is take best practices, implement those, and then we'll tell the employers what we're doing. As for financial institutions, we do go out periodically, I would say twice a year, to all the different ones and explain to them what we do, what our response would be, and what their best practices should be. We don't, we don't write their policy for them, but we're more than happy to review it, critique it, and give them some advice that we've got.
So you do meet with them regularly?
Yes, we do.
While you're up there, I know you guys spend a lot of time and resources at the retreat, especially now that it's become essentially a maximum security prison or a place that houses violent people with mental health problems. Do you think that should be in here, the possibility that somehow everybody got let out at once?
Believe it or not, our responses to the retreat have decreased quite a bit.
Well, that's partly because they got caught using you guys as de facto a security device.
I'm not going to go in all, in fact, is our responses to the retreat have significantly decreased. They do have their own security and, you know, they are an institution in this town and if there are issues there, we are going to respond. But to answer your question, no, we're not anyone's personal security.
Oh, I know. I don't think you should be. I just, I think they were understaffing at some point or were found to have been understaffed. My only question is if someone who is really, you know, out of control gets out, is that covered somewhere in here?
It would be, it would, we, we look at actions, okay, or behavior. So it would be no different than if there was a tragic incident at a school, industrial area, medical area. We, our response pretty much is dictated by behavior.
Fair.
Another question. Do you have special training for your department in, what do I want to say? Awareness around these different kinds of behaviors and how to handle them to not escalate a situation? I mean, because that can be really tricky. I mean...
We do take training, but by no way shape or form are we selling ourselves as, you know, mental health experts.
Yeah. No, I understand that part. But even just in regular domestic disputes or somebody like in a neighborhood who might have PTSD and off their meds or something for a while and how to respond to that person to not escalate a situation that could turn crazy very simply. And I know there's been incidents of that in the past, but I'm just wondering if that's been built in now as part of, I mean, to me, it's, again, it's part of emergency planning to me in a way.
Well, part of our accreditation to remain certified is eight hours of domestic violence training per year. And also because of the proximity of the Bradleboro retreat, we do have, every one of our officers has taken a course in responding to someone in a mental health crisis. So they have gone through that.
Or also, the other category would be, wouldn't be considered mental health per se, but Alzheimer's and people who have memory loss problems who can be, I found somebody who I knew out wandering the streets far from home and how do you handle that? Again, do they have some awareness built in that, around that kind of thing to people who could get, those people can get agitated really quickly sometimes, sundowners, end of the day kind of thing, or just, you know, leave me alone and can get very aggressive sometimes. And that takes, I know I did private care for a long time, and it takes a certain amount of training and foresight to handle those situations delicately also, so to not escalate those either. But it's different than a mental health...
Yes, it is.
So is there some awareness brought on that?
I would say awareness, but not specialized training.
Yeah, okay. That might be something to just add on to the, not a whole lot, just add on to the other training. Wouldn't be bad to talk about that.
I have a question about notification systems in the event of an emergency. I know that it used to be, I don't exactly know how it happens now, well, we have the sirens for BY and then we had radios that you could get, right?
There is natural videos?
But, I mean, is there, isn't there a phone service too you can set up for?
Yes.
Is it, like, as communication is evolving quite rapidly, especially over the last seven years?
The phone system's grouped into its bands and you can, you can, I believe you go online, you can give them your mobile phone number or, and you can give them your phone number and you can rank it in terms of which ones you want to have them push a message to. And so there is a communication protocol associated with the Vermont Yankee Radiological Emergency Plan. But the band's system, band's notification system can be used for other incidents, so...
So if there was like a mass flood or something in a certain area, would we be able to notify and handle that that is happening?
Yeah. I just want to jump in on that and add to it a little bit. You know, the town is a consequence of our involvement in the response of BY has had the band system or the Bradleboro Emergency Notification System, which allows us to sort of reverse 911 and call out, and it can call out to your, to your home or your cell phone. It can send you texts, all that sort of thing. That's still in place today and it was certainly something we used during Tropical Storm Irene. The state is also, at the same time, starting to look at that as a valuable resource statewide and not just, you know, within the towns in the emergency planning zone. And so they've created what's called the Vermont Alert System. And it's very similar in that you provide them with your telephone or your cell phone and you can, you can decide what types of notifications you'd like to get, whether, you know, whether they're weather-related or whether they're police-related, if they're traffic-related, if it's, you know, absolutely everything. And so the state's really pushing this Vermont Alert System and I'd recommend everybody, if you have the chance to Google Vermont Alert and to sign up, I think it's a useful, useful service.
And then over and above that, if you go to NOAA, the National Weather Service, you can also sign up for alerts for flash flooding events and other weather-related events in the region. So, or any other zip code, actually, so...
And do those all work in event of a power failure?
Yep. I mean, as long as your phone's on, it works.
Yeah, okay. Because that would be the other, I mean...
Well, those radios that we got from Vermont Yankee.
Right.
If you have one.
Every year, they send us new batteries.
Yeah, which is one of the harder things to do.
And they come on at like 3:00 in the morning and tell me that it's going to hail somewhere. So it works.
Yeah. And the, just to your mobile phone, smartphone or something also work?
All right. I think we're getting a little far afield. Are you guys all set? And we have another member of the public here. I don't know if you're, okay. I just wanted to throw two things in here that are very minor, but on page 22, the town plan adoption date is wrong.
Yeah.
And on page nine, we mention fluvial erosion hazard, and I don't know if it's a good idea to have that in here, given that it no longer exists and I don't think we're, at least in the immediate future, planning to revisit that.
Okay.
Am I wrong about that?
Whether we, whether we adopt it or not remains to be seen. It's an item of discussion under the, under the rewrite of the zoning ordinance.
Right, right. I just, I wouldn't want FEMA to ding us.
No, that's okay. They won't. I mean, the part that's relevant here is also that for any project that qualifies for Act 250 review, the state does actually review for fluvial erosion hazard and they maintain. In technical terms, they maintain the map layer that is the fluvial erosion hazard layer. And so if a project is subject to Act 250 review, the Agency of Natural Resources will provide comment on the basis of fluvial erosion hazard as well as any other issue. And so projects that involve 10 housing units or 10 acres are subject to fluvial erosion hazard review.
Fair enough.
So I'm trying to catch, did you say page 22 was the...
Sorry. Page 22 in that table, that's two-thirds down. It says type of existing protection Bradleboro Town Plan. And on the right side, there's a column gaps in existing protection. And under that column says town plan adopted March 7, 2011.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, you're right. So it's February 13.
Do you guys remember the date it was adopted?
February 19, 2013. After a long battle.
That's right.
The Valentine's Day present.
The award-winning town plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, the award-winning town plan.
That's right. So I caught it somewhere. I'm glad you caught that. That's good, thank you.
Okay, so everybody in the public satisfied? Is the staff content? Is this enough of a discussion for us to move this on to the next arena, which I presume is likely?
I have one other comment.
Oh, sorry.
In some of these, the different kinds of events that are, that you've described where you have risk assessment and what are the other kind of categories, assessing vulnerability under winter storms and ice storms and some of the, page 12 and on some of the others, you've mentioned specific storms and specific events. And I know we did a pretty big ice storm somewhere, 97, 98, big, that kind of really wiped, closed things down for a while and maybe that...
There was one in 2009.
And then, yeah, then another one more recently too. But I wondered if you wanted to just note those in there.
Okay.
There was something about ice storms. It wasn't in the list, you're right. But I remember seeing it.
I think the question would be in terms of the data source as to whether they rose to the level of either a governor's state of emergency being issued or a presidential declaration. Because there's cutoff points for the estimated amount of damage that has to be reached before either one of those things gets announced.
I don't think the damage here was as much as in other places.
Right.
But it did down major power lines and transmission lines and the grid and whatnot.
So where you don't see it mentioned, it's because it probably didn't trigger the designation. And so the data source that we use for these weather-related events is actually part of the National Weather Service. So they keep kind of a, I'm not sure what the right term is, kind of like an almanac of big weather events. And that's where we draw the data from.
Yeah. I guess it comes under the extent, strength or magnitude. I mean, there's some other, like under wind, there was something in September 2010.
If you look on page 11, Carolina, there is something. On the bottom of page 11? I don't know if it's where you want it, but...
No, no. On page 12, under local severe winter storms and ice storms, under extent and magnitude.
Right. I think what he's saying is that there's a log that they pulled from. So if it wasn't in the log, they can't use it.
It didn't rise to the level of, right.
So, you know, it sucked for us, but it doesn't, it's not worth putting in the plan at all.
We don't have, we don't have the data, we don't have a description of the event. So if you're thinking like a...
It's in my mind, I remember that.
If you're thinking like a FEMA plan reviewer, what they're doing is they're actually looking for this and by describing cases of specific damage that has been, and the impact that's been measured, you can begin to build a picture of the kinds of hazards that Bradleboro confronts and the impact those hazards have had in the past. And so you can imagine being in Missouri and this section of the plan being quite a bit different.
Yeah.
So, you know, remember, it's a one-size-fits-all national template that we're dealing with here. It goes to demonstrate to some extent the mild nature of the climate here relative to other parts of the country.
And I have one other question. I don't think that it's important particularly, but on page 18, where the local hazard mitigation goals are listed there and under the third bullet, where it talks about decrease future vulnerability by designing new public infrastructure such as roads, bridges, et cetera. I know in the Planning Commission, we...
such as roads, bridges, et cetera. I know in the Planning Commission, we talked about, especially after Irene, there were some areas that was like one way in and one way out, and there was a bridge, and the bridge was out. And so that whole development was like cut off, and we, I forget what we called those, those kind of
Lollipop developments.
Lollipop, lollipop developments. And I'm just, not that it has to be that specific here, but I would think that would be something that would be, I don't know if we can
We've addressed, we've addressed the tendency towards lollipops in the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, for the town plan, yeah.
It's in the town plan, too, isn't it?
Yeah, it's in the town plan. It's in the subdivision rewrite, and it will be in the zoning code rewrite. Just in case you're not following what we're talking about, because lollipop is a planner slang term. Sherwood Circle. So if you're really enterprising, and it's not your car, for instance, Mike, you could just drive straight out of there, but you have to be willing to drive through a fence and over somebody else's land, not a road. But when Irene happened, there was some, I remember, some residents of Sherwood Circle making clear to us that there was a problem there.
Westgate, Westgate has one way in and out, Carrachill has one way in and out.
Right. So there's a bunch along Route 9, subdivisions of date from the 1980s, basically, where it's one way in, one way out. And we've looked at that from the standpoint of trying to link some of them together, therefore having more than one way in and one way out, and take steps to make it, you know, make it not possible for developers to continue that kind of land use pattern in the future. So that's precisely the overlap between this and the work of the Planning Commission, I guess.
Those are mitigation kind of things to be included. I just have one other comment. I, I know some of the others went, the state of Vermont did, taking stock of Vermont's resiliency. There was a whole big conference and regional meetings, and then a big statewide meeting. And I went to one of those that was more of a regional meeting, where there were people from Newthane and Dummerston, and looking at what worked and what doesn't work in terms of resiliency along all these kinds of hazards. But one of the things that came up from there was communication systems breakdown, that when an event first happens, there's kind of like those first responders, but then how does the next system work, come into place? And it's not really a, more of a comment than a, just, the feedback there was that the response systems need to be more regionalized and a system put in place somehow, because that, people felt like that that was missing. I mean, that was one of the things I heard there at that meeting. And I don't know if that's something that comes into this hazard mitigation plan, or if it's just how we work in general, or because it
Radio communication, the most first responders, is that what you're speaking to?
Well, just when different people show up on the scene to start taking charge, and then, you know, then the, the next level of help comes in, whether it's police or fire, or the National Guard then comes in. But how all that gets coordinated from that initial response when there's really the crisis moment, and then things shift over. And it was just, I mean, people had some serious, mostly out in the Newbrook area, but just, it was just something that was discussed. I was surprised, actually. But, I mean, I just wanted to mention it here, because I went back to my notes from that meeting, and that was one of the things that they just said, talking about response systems on a regional basis to keep people in the loop. I guess that
I think, I think one of the lessons from Irene was, first of all, that they needed to do something about the State Emergency Operations Center, because that, in fact, was a casualty of the event.
That's right. Big time.
I believe they've kind of addressed that. But that was a major, that was a major issue. So it didn't impact this community nearly as much as it did perhaps some other smaller communities who would be depending on the state response much earlier on. And then the nature of the devastation, and then, you know, the way it mapped out, it made physical access extremely difficult for certain communities. So they were isolated for some time. So that meant that local, you know, local people had to sort of organize themselves into groups and figure out
Yeah, we didn't have that so much here, but
Right. What to try and what to do. And then, as they, as they became tired or ran out of resources, it was unclear, you know, really what the next level was going to be, or who was going to come in behind them. So it took a little while to organize that stuff. I think that Wyndham Region actually benefited a lot from the effectiveness of the Wyndham Regional Commission that established pretty strong communication between the different towns, and then kept their website going and made maps. And I think that we fed into that quite a bit, and we depended on that also to some extent. And then Brattleboro, recognizing that Marlborough was cut off, and certainly Wilmington was cut off, worked pretty hard to make, you know, backdoor connections there. So it did take a while, and I think that there have been lessons at all different levels. And I think that you, if you were living in Marlborough, you'd see different kinds of responses there. They've taken, I think, a different approach to local emergency management. They've devoted some different, you know, they've devoted considerable resources to improving that as part of that. I think it's true also of the Newbrook Fire District as well.
Yeah.
So it's hard to say, but I think that there's a lot more awareness of how things can break down, you know, the communication can break down pretty quickly, you know, community by community, if the disaster has the same kind of pattern as Irene, which was to take roads and communications out.
Yeah.
And in particular, challenge the state's response. So I think it's fair to say there was some initial confusion, and it took some time for things to be established, but there's been lessons from that. So I think that's true of our, our response, too, yeah.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest breakdowns that you're going to hear about Irene is that the state lost their Emergency Operations Center early on in the incident. So every phone number you tried to call to get help, every phone number you tried to call to speak to an official from the state to get resources, fax machines, everything was gone up there. We were lucky in the sense that we're a big enough community, and we work a lot with state officials, that we knew backdoor numbers. I mean, I have a whole list of cell phone numbers on my phone that I knew we could use to get help.
Yeah.
And that paid off, where I think some of the smaller communities, you know, don't have that resource to use. And that's the breakdown, and that's where they had trouble getting help.
You know, I would also suggest, and not to tooth Brattleboro's horn too terribly much, but, you know, serious planning for that event started, you know, pretty much in this room, on the Wednesday ahead of that storm. That storm happened on Sunday. So one of the things that I think, you know, we identified fairly early on was that this was going to be an event which was going to, you know, take over the entire region. And so there was a very distinct likelihood that we would be on our own for, for a response. And so I think we kind of planned accordingly. And, you know, the state, as, as has been pointed out, was offline very early on in the event. And so, you know, when we, you know, when we planned for, okay, let's make do with our resources, because we're not likely going to be able to call in resources from other areas of the state, that became very true very quickly on that particular Sunday.
Thanks for that discussion, Neil. It was just something that popped up at that meeting that I wasn't aware of. And it's good to know that we're kind of, I forget that the Wyndham Regional Commission also was really key in getting those communities, getting that communication going. And that was highlighted afterwards a number of times, how important that was to the outline towns.
Oh, the Wyndham Regional Commission, if I can just jump in on that one as well, they were absolutely essential in the, in the work that they did in the wake of Tropical Storm Irene. You know, we, you know, in the, in the immediate aftermath, you know, we were, we were really, you know, pretty well-prepared, I thought. But in the sort of, you know, three and five and two weeks out, you know, we were kind of in a little bit of uncharted territory to have Chris over at the Wyndham Regional Commission, who was liaising to FEMA as they were coming in and sort of saying, okay, guys, you know, if you're, you know, working with the towns, you know, tomorrow, the next day, you need to be planning and preparing for this, because FEMA's going to show up, and they're going to do this kind of thing. And alleviated us from having to sort of have to liaise to some of those federal agencies. And so they really helped grease those kids, I think. And they did a wonderful job.
And they won a planning award, a statewide planning award for it.
Yep, they did.
Really helped us out. They were a little bit further down the road than we were able to be doing.
Yeah, that's good. Nice to know we can count on them again in the future.
Okay. Are we ready to put this to bed?
Yep.
All right.
So James, I'd be looking for a recommendation to move this forward to the Select Board for their review and approval?
Can I have a motion to make that recommendation?
To make a motion that we recommend this plan to the Select Board?
Incorporating the comments that have been raised in our
Yeah.
Incorporating the comments that have been raised.
Right. Looking for a second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.
One thing I'll note while we're all here, Mark Ethier submitted his resignation. He felt he didn't have enough time to
Say that again?
Mark Ethier submitted his recommendation.
Resign.
What did I say?
Recommendation.
Recommendation. Yeah, he recommended that he resign. He just feels like he hasn't been able to get enough time to make this work, so.
So he's stepping down.
He's stepping down so he can fill his seat with someone who is able to attend more meetings, so.
And on that note, can I talk to you, the member of the public who happens to have submitted an application to join the Planning Commission?
Oh, my gosh.
Everybody, this is Kathy, Kathy Ufer. Kathy, this is Tim Lee Hunt, David Cadron, James Valente, Liz McGlocklin, and Carolyn Erleksiu. So tomorrow night at the Select Board, Kathy's application, which is the only one for the Planning Commission, will be considered by the Select Board. And if past practice is anything to go by, given that it's not a hotly contested seat, I feel, I feel somewhat confident in saying that Kathy's likely to win this seat.
It's not hotly contested, but you can do a lot of good.
I've been wanting you to
Did you like that?
I've been wanting you to come aboard for a long time, so thank you very much.
That's great.
If you do lose, though, they should probably take stock of your resume or whatever.
Yeah, we should, we should talk if that's what happens, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so moved that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Can't second your own motion.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
That was great.